Are we ready? Call the meeting to order. Have a roll call.
Copeland?
Here.
McCain? Wertz?
Here.
Hyon?
Here.
Johnson? Here. Rust?
Here.
Handfelder?
Here.
Trent?
Here.
I will say the Pledge of Allegiance. Do we have any public comments?
Yes, I understand. I understand we have one public comment here and then we have two people participating online that would like to come in.
Okay, you realize your three minutes? And if you represented, if there's a group here, we need one representative from that group. And we hope everybody's considerate.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Debbie Whit skin and I'm speaking on behalf of the full-time faculty at Lewis and Clark, who are represented by the Lewis and Clark Faculty Association. We felt compelled to share these sentiments again since when they were initially shared in the special board meeting on April 29th, there was no recognition or response from the board. Tonight, there is a discussion item regarding the survey that was completed by the faculty, full-time faculty. It is our hope that the board members will consider these comments, reflect on the culture that is being built at Lewis and Clark. The mission of Lewis and Clark is to empower people. The vision for this institution is to be a preeminent provider of relevant, high-quality learning experiences to the communities we serve. Our values include respect and integrity. Unfortunately, over the last two years, the culture of Lewis and Clark has changed. The environment the board leadership has created no longer feels empowering or respectful. We have had, we have an opportunity to work together. We have faculty, staff, and administration willing to collaborate and work to make Lewis and Clark a distinguished provider of college experiences. In contrast, the divided and partisan nature of the board has led to a climate where some faculty are fearful of possible board actions, including reduction in force. Too often, some members of the board reach well beyond their duties and interfere with ours. The Higher Learning Commission Accreditation Criterion 5.8.1 requires that shared governance at the institution engages its internal stakeholders. This includes its governing board, administration, faculty, staff, and students through planning, policies, and procedures. This criteria makes it clear that the faculty have a responsibility to actively engage in consequential matters of institutional governance. In order to fulfill this responsibility, the full-time faculty survey was conducted to gauge an opinion of the effectiveness of the current board leadership. The results of this survey, including individual comments, can be found in its entirety in the board book, which is located by visiting www.lc.edu/BOT. We encourage all internal and external stakeholders, including full-time and adjunct faculty, staff, students, and community members, to read the results of this valuable survey. Thank you.
Should I go ahead, Sue?
Yes, please go ahead.
Thank you. Good evening. My name is Bobby Brown. I am also speaking on behalf of the full-time faculty of Lewis and Clark, who are represented by the Lewis and Clark Faculty Association. The results of the faculty search, which was completed by approximately 70% of our full-time faculty, were shared with full-time faculty, administration, and the board. These results indicated a majority faculty opinion that the current board leadership is falling short of its responsibility to do the following. Participate meaningfully in shared governance. Review faculty interests in decision-making deliberations. Delegate day-to-day management of the college to the administration. Adopt the mission of the institution. Meet the commitment to action by the board as a whole. The concerns and feedback provided specifically indicate that a majority of full-time faculty strongly feel individual board members do not have the best interest of Lewis and Clark in mind when making decisions. We urge each of you to reflect on the role you play within Lewis and Clark and your obligations to work together with all constituents. Aggregated results and individual comments from the LCFA Board Survey reveal that many faculty questioned Mr. Hyon's leadership regarding dedication to our educational mission and respectful collaboration with faculty. While Mr. Hyon's concern for taxpayer interests, internal auditing, and long-term fiscal matters is well documented, his commitment to academic responsibilities is not as evident. The educational mission must take precedence, and faculty concerns are fundamental to successful completion of that mission. During the past two years, board candidates committed to direct communication with faculty via a standing committee. After being elected, that committee was never actualized. Mr. Hyon held one listening session with faculty without dialogue. This is not open and honest communication. The CAO of the institution was installed with no consideration of faculty opinion. Under Mr. Hyon's chairmanship, the board has failed to engage faculty regarding issues of shared governance. Our immediate concern is the 10-year comprehensive accreditation evaluation by the Higher Learning Commission, which is guaranteed to reveal this deficiency. We encourage the board to remedy this situation prior to the HLC visit. We, as faculty, have rallied support as demonstrated in the most recent trustee election. We will no longer be passive and allow the college we love be governed by board leadership with myopic viewpoints and personal agendas. The support for Dr. Traska is overwhelming inside and outside of the college. His ideas, leadership, and the teams he is building have all of us excited for what the future holds. We want to reiterate the change needed with the current campus mood in which faculty be threatened be improved. Together, we can work towards our mission of empowering people. Thank you.
Thank you. I believe the next person is Coral Kimball.
Yes. Good evening. My name is Coral Kimball, and I am also speaking on behalf of the full-time faculty at Lewis and Clark, who are represented by the Lewis and Clark Faculty Association. I would like to share the statement that was published by therivibender.com regarding the faculty response to the lack of response from the board about the survey results that were shared.
Excuse me. We've had two speakers for the faculty. The proper procedure is one speaker for a group. Thank you. Any other comments? Need a budget health update.
So, as been tradition, I will provide a quick budget update focusing on revenue and expenditures. This is as of March 31st. We're projecting the same for local and state government revenues. We do have a pair to gain a little bit of ground on tuition and fees if the projections pan out. Projection, of course, is based on the percentage of tuition and fees collected through March 31st of fiscal year 2020. This percentage applied with current year-to-date to determine what annual amount might be. And as we've certainly noted in the past, and as you'll see today, we have enrollment actually three places on the agenda. It continues to be a top priority for the institution. Other revenue is still trending down as our onsite preference presence remains minimal, but that will be increasing more and more in the coming months. And our indirect cost transfers are projecting essentially even with last month. On the expenditure side, some further good news is our total fiscal year projected expenses dropped another $65,000. And we are currently projecting revenues over expenses of approximately $2.1 million. So, that's the budget update, sir, and any questions? Thank you.
Any questions from the board? If not, enrollment update?
Sure, so I'll give a little bit of an update here focusing just on numbers, and I know the board has seen these updates. So, weekly, we get an enrollment overview from our enrollment team. And as I shared with the board last week, this week continues to look good. So, in terms of our fall semester, currently, our campus credit students are up 9.3% from where we were last week and 7.3% on the credit hours. For summer, we're up 1.7% from where we were last week at this time, and we're up 9.2% on credit hours. Brett Reinert is going to talk a little bit later on in the agenda, and we'll dig into some of the strategies and some of the work that our enrollment mover team has been working on to really help inform and influence the good work that's happening around enrollment. So, that concludes my report, sir. Thank you.
Next is the omnibus agenda. Any board member wishing to pull any or more than one item may do so. If not, we'll approve all the omnibus agenda in one motion. Anyone want to pull anything?
Chairman, I would like to pull out L and M because I think there's a couple of transactions that need to be highlighted.
Okay. Anyone else? Need a motion to approve all of the omnibus agenda items with the exception of L and M.
Motion.
The motion, any discussion? Call for the vote?
Copeland?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
I need a motion to approve L, Contracts Requiring Board Approval. Have a motion?
Motion.
A second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I just wanted to, I guess, Dr. Traska maybe to talk about the interact contract and just give us a summary of, you know, what the goals here are.
Yes.
I just think it's a direction for the college that we need to highlight and just bring out at the meeting. Not that I disagree with it or anything, I just think it's worth noting.
Absolutely. So, interact, so this is actually an organization that was engaged prior to me arriving. And when I arrived, I actually have had experience with interacting at a prior institution. So, after several months of discussion with the team, we obviously decided that, hey, you know, as we move forward as an institution, we need to focus obviously on enrollment and also kind of this image, you know, how do we rebrand, refocus the institution to get to the next level? So, the interact proposal is going to really help us focus on more targeted marketing, revitalization of our website, and also looking at more broad strategies that will help us grow through a kind of social media platform. So, it's, I think, an investment that is frankly well overdue for the institution. Interact is an expert in this field. They have done tremendous work across the nation with community colleges. And one of the data points you look at is, okay, what impact have they had in institutions that they've worked with? And the impact has always been very positive. So, we're, you know, we want to jump right in on this, and it's going to help complement, I think, the good work that Laura Inlo is doing and the marketing team already, but we have, we have some work ahead of us. So, that's the general sort of scope of it.
How about timeframe?
Yep, sure. So, timeframe on implementation is, this is, this is over a couple of years. I mean, we're not going to see like an ROI next Tuesday at noon. This is several years where interact will end up doing some focus groups internally and externally, and that's going to help focus some of the marketing and public relations work we need to do. It's also going to help us identify and really focus on what types of programs that we need to be investing in as an institution to be able to move forward. So, you know, two or three years, I would say, over that time, we'll be able to kind of see, I think, the fruits of the labor with interact. We're pretty excited. I mean, I don't, I could call any, you know, I know Lori's been involved in this, Laura, if they want to say anything, if they can. But we're all excited, and it took a while to kind of get here. We had a lot of internal discussion and feel that this is the best way to go. And because of their expertise and their specific focus on community colleges, that is why we really feel interact's communication is the best investment for Lewis and Clark.
Add to what Dr. Traska already said. You'll hear later in the meeting from Laura Inlo, who's chairing the mover team, who is looking at the rebranding and website redesign. This was a recommendation from that committee, and it's also a recommendation coming out of Key Direction 1 that you'll hear about later. So, there's a lot of support for it, and I'll just say, by having interact do both the rebranding as well as the website redesign, there's a substantial savings because they'll be able to use the same focus groups for the surveys that they'll be taking or soliciting, so.
And I hope you'll keep us updated on how.
Absolutely, yeah. Lots, lots to come.
Good, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Call for the vote? Or is there further discussion? Any more discussion from anyone? If not, call for the vote?
Copeland?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Motion approved. Item M. Need a motion to approve purchases requiring board approval.
Motion.
Need a second? Second? Brenda? Okay. Any discussion?
Uh, Mr., oh, go ahead.
Well, yeah, I had a little, a few questions that I wish I would have brought up at the Finance Committee meeting, but on the Alucian system, who are the users? Does everybody use that, or is it like just the faculty or just staff? Or I guess I'm asking Jeff.
Yeah, Jeff, you want to come up? Thanks.
Good evening, everyone. So, Alucian is our ERP system. It's used by faculty, staff, and students. It holds all our student records. It makes sure we get our ICCB reporting. It's really, it's really the heart of our software. It's our core technology to really run the campus, so it's a very important software package.
Well, how, I'm kind of interested in the process of selecting, of course, Alucian was selected a long time ago, but now we're, we're talking about a $3 million decision, so it's kind of making me a little bit, you know, we need to be vigilant, I guess you'd say. So, we're the, like, was there some sort of like a mover team or a user, user group that kind of was discussed, that was talked to? Or we didn't put from faculty, for example?
In this case, there wasn't. This is a software that, it has an average implementation. A change from this software would be a two- to three-year endeavor where you would absolutely have to do parallel processing with another vendor. If, we spent about a year selecting back in 2004, selecting this product. There was teams that, across a diverse team, that looked at different software packages, and they ended up selecting, at the time, it was called Datatel. Later, it was purchased by Alucian, so it changed names, but it's basically the same software for us. But we're so, we're so vested in this product that you absolutely would not be able to save money by changing at this point. The other part of this is we, I know it's expensive, but when you go to look at an ERP system, especially today, you're going to find most of them are in the cloud, and they're going to cost more than we're spending on this product where we do host here on our campus, all our servers, and maintain those. So, I know it's expensive, but it's a, it's a just incredibly important part of the process. I really don't see how we could run the college without it at this point.
I mean, if I could make a couple of comments, I would. Go ahead, sir.
I was going to say, does Alucian have a product that's in the cloud?
They do have a product that's in the cloud. It's substantially higher, and it actually would, it would be somewhat of a minor implementation to do, to actually migrate to the cloud. It's something we've just avoided because it is more expensive and would require our users to learn new ways to do what they're doing now.
Aren't we going to have to go to the cloud eventually? I mean, that's the direction everything's going.
Well, you know, we have a huge infrastructure over in Erickson in the computer room. It may be that eventually you will be required to go to the cloud, but they're offering us a five-year contract. They're actually had offered a seven. So, you know, we're good for at least that long. And honestly, you have more control, you, you have control of your data, and you do save money by having it hosted locally.
Yeah, you don't have to convince me. I'm not a big fan of the cloud, but that's where things are going. I just have one last question. Does this, does Alucian interface with Blackboard?
Not, I mean, they're not directly, it does, yes. We actually pull data from Alucian to do analytics on it using a Blackboard product. And then another product called Pyramid is the interface for that. So, I mean, it, it's a database, so there's ways to manipulate the data and.
They're not really tied together.
But they're, they're not affiliated.
Yeah. And they're not, I mean, it'd be easy to have one without the other and vice versa.
That is correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you very much. Sorry, and thank you for that detail.
Sure.
I want to thank you too, Jeff, for your analysis. And this is a really important thing. I just wanted to highlight it, and that's a big expenditure. And I don't know if Dr. Traska has anything else, but I appreciate all your efforts on this.
No, I was just going to say, thank you, Jeff. You know, with ERPs, they're tricky. I mean, like Jeff mentioned, if we were to change ERPs, you'd have to run a parallel system. It's a two- or three-year process, and you're paying for essentially two systems. You know, one of the vulnerabilities of getting into an ERP, it's sort of like, you know, are you a Mac or are you a, are you a PC person? I mean, you invest in it, you have to keep updating it. The thing, too, is we have leverage to negotiate. We're a customer, and so I think that's helped us. And I also wanted to give Jeff a lot of credit. He and I met several times, and, you know, being able to renegotiate this contract to get us some savings on that end of the support is huge. And I think that's going to also prove, in a longer term, some significant savings for the college. I think, you know, what is it, the first year, we're saving $100,000 after next year, and then we'll keep moving from there. So, yeah, no, this is, this is the central operating system for the campus. And so, I think it's a great investment for us. And quite frankly, Alucian is a pretty solid product, so I think it's the way to go. So, just thank you, Jeff, and thank you for the questions, Kevin and Julie.
Any other questions or discussion? If not, call for the vote?
Copeland?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Next will be action items. Need a motion on R, Approval of Grant or Sponsored Contract Opportunities, pages 125 through 132.
So moved.
Second?
Second?
Motion been made, second. Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Copeland?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Trent? Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Need a motion for S, Main Campus Fire Alarm Systems Upgrade.
Motion.
Second.
Motion been made in second. Any discussion? If not, call for the vote?
Copeland?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Need a motion for U, Lease Agreement.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Copeland?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
And just for everyone else's information, we pulled the lease with Inland Rivers Ports and Terminals. So, that's why we skipped that. Thank you.
I didn't, I didn't hear you.
I was explaining to the group that we skipped Inland Rivers Ports and Terminals because they, they decided not to take the lease.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
Thank you. Need a lease agreement for V with Pride?
Motion.
Get a motion, Dwight?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Brenda, second? Any discussion? Vote?
Copeland?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Need a motion for W, Lease Agreement with River Bend Growth Association.
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Copeland?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
X, Lease Agreement with Montessori Children's House. Motion?
Second.
Okay. Been made in seconded. Any discussion? For the vote?
Copeland?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Item Y, Lease Agreement with Illinois Humanities. Need a motion?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion been made in seconded. Any discussion? Call for the vote?
Copeland?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain? Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Item Z, Commencement Regalia Fee. Need a motion to approve that?
Motion.
Second? Motion been made, who made the second? I will, Chuck? Okay, Chuck made the second. Okay. Any discussion on the fee? Call for the vote?
Copeland?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Handfelder?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Double A, Annual Membership, Dues, Charitable Events, and Contributions, page 193. Need a motion to approve?
Motion.
Second.
Brenda, second? Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. I believe this, while this is a very important issue in that, you've had a lot of, a little controversy in the past on it. I think that this item should be referred to the Policy Committee, and we actually shouldn't have a board policy, which I don't think we have one now. Correct me if I'm wrong. And I would, I would think as part of that, we'd want to have some charitable contribution budget detail, you know, detailing kind of what, what our plans are for the budget, for the charitable expenditures for the following year. So, I think in any case, ought to be referred to the board, to the Policy Committee. So, that's why I'll be voting no.
Any other discussion?
I have a question, Mr. Chairman. Was that, who posed that a second ago? Kevin? Could you explain a little further what we want there, Kevin, for the Policy Committee?
I'm, you know, I'm sorry, I just, I didn't hear you.
Could you explain that a little further, what you would expect from the Policy Committee?
What I would refer to the Policy Committee is the whole, the whole issue of is charitable contributions and memberships and dues and that sort of thing. That whole, I think it's a, although it's not a big-money expenditure, obviously, it's, it's a symbolic thing, which is, I think it's important that, that we're all together on that.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Hi, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm going to vote yes, and, but I think we can go with Kevin's recommendation also, you know, get us, get us through this year. Maybe this could be a trans-
Uh, recommendation also, you know, get us, get us through this year, maybe this could be a transition year. Um, and then we consider it for the future and maybe tighten up and have a, have a policy. I guess, were you thinking that this would be the same every year then, or we have to, would we have to pass this every year, or what were you thinking there?
No, I think this is a, this is just a, a practice that I think is, is actually relatively common in, in education. But, you know, so it would essentially be, I mean, I think in the budget each year, there would be essentially a line that the board would ultimately approve with full budget to. Permit the president to uh essentially utilize up to fifteen thousand dollars to support local organizations, perhaps memberships. And, and then of course, you know, those would be reported to the board, um, and whether it's an informal update or. We could have an agenda item that on a monthly basis, you know, um, these dollars were, you know, were expended to these organizations, so at least there's a. A level of transparency, I, I, well, I totally respect the perspective on the policy, I. I think this is more of an institutional practice than a policy, um, and as long as we're, you know, if, if the board says, you know, hey, we're, we're. Permitting up to fifteen thousand and that's my, my ability to work and, and, you know, in alignment with our values and with our organizational. Um, I think focus on community engagement to support those organizations and perhaps become a member um. Of, of, you know, an organization in the community, which is kind of giving back to the community as well, so um. I look at it as a practice and not necessarily a policy, but certainly will follow the guidelines of the board, um, as you wish.
I certainly don't, I'm not against the practice and, and as a matter of fact, fifteen thousand dollars a year may not be enough. And I.
I agree.
And so, so I think that it's a, I think it's a kind of an important thing that that ought to be hashed out in committee first and then get a recommendation from the committee.
I think you uh, uh, I think you are low, on the low side of the scale, but also the fact that. You're uh wanting to support organizations that we're asking them to support us. And, and Dr. Traska needs to get out in the community and meet and greet people and, and be, and uh, become members of these organizations and to do that. He needs to be, be a member, so I look at it from the business point, it's just the cost of doing business and we need, we need him out there to meet and greet people.
Also, I believe Dr. Traska should have the latitude of making those determinations without having coming, coming back to us for approval. And I think that's what you're asking, if he gives us a list and if some, someone or some organization on that list that. This board feels should not get a donation or a contribution or a membership than we have, then that's, that would be done by this body.
Yeah, that, I think that's.
Pretty much what you're saying, so we're really not giving Dr. Traska authorization without our approval.
You repeat that, I didn't.
I said, this recommendation is authorizing him to spend up to fifteen thousand, but what you're saying, he can spend up to fifteen thousand based on our approval. Of whom it goes to. It's not his decision, right?
That's not what I understand.
No, I thought that's what Kevin was trying.
Well, yeah, kind of, yeah, I mean, I mean, right now, the way I, the way I saw the motion drafted, maybe I misunderstood, but it's kind of like a, a blanket saying.
Well, it also says outlined by Robert, Robin Schwartz, and I know uh, when this was done last year, that he did look at it very closely, they did identify. Organizations and agencies that they feel would not qualify, and so I think giving Dr. Traska that authorization is proper. Without interference. From this board. My opinion.
Any other comments?
I trust Dr. Traska.
Call for the vote.
Copeland?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Thank you. A and B rank and promotion committee recommendation, need a motion to approve? And a second?
Second.
Right, second, any discussion? Call for the vote.
Copeland?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
AC proposed policy two oh eight, summer operational schedule, need a motion to approve?
So move.
Brenda make motion to approve, second?
Second.
Second? Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Copeland?
Yes.
McCain? Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Item AD, resolution twenty-one dash eight, inter-fund transfers, motion to approve?
Motion.
Second? Yep, motion been made in seconded. Call for the vote.
Copeland?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Item AE, resolution twenty-one dash nine, working cash transfer, motion to approve?
So move.
Second.
Motion been made in second? Call for the vote.
Copeland?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Item AF, resolution twenty-one dash ten, working cash transfer, O and M, page one nine-nine, motion to approve?
Motion. Second?
Motion been made in seconded? Call for the vote.
Copeland?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Item AG, organizational restructure, motion to approve?
Second.
Second.
Second, motion been made in second? Uh, any discussion or explanation from the doctor?
No, I, I would just again, thank the team for, quite frankly, the diligence and commitment to do this work, as I've said in previous meetings, it isn't easy. And we are making decisions we feel have a tremendous impact on the future growth and better service to our students through our teaching and learning focus, so. I think everything outlined here um is uh, is a reflection of that hard work, so we ask for your approval as we move forward with this phase three proposal.
Any other comments? Call for the vote.
Copeland?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Item AH, adopt core values, motion to approve?
So move.
Second?
Motion been made in second? Any discussion? Call for the vote.
Copeland?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
Hyon?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Move on to discussion items, AI faculty survey results discussion of coordinated board response slash email. We're not going to vote on that, uh, we have read it, we have uh, had a discussion at our organizational meeting. We've turned it over to Dr. Traska, he has teams working, input from the entire campus. So this gives everyone an opportunity to express their opinion. I like the uh, his use of the uh. Information in the faculty survey, as well as the survey that he has from Lewis and Clark Strategic Planning Survey. It was an excellent survey also, he's using, utilizing that, input from the general public. So his teams are working together as a team and in the spirit of. All of us being on the same team, working for the progress and the excellence of Lewis and Clark College in every area. Dr. Traska and I have talked about this many times, we agree on it, and uh, if he has anything to add to that, fine, but uh, that's the extent. That I'm going to allow the A one to be discussed.
Chairman, that was not a, we're not something to vote on it, and I asked that to be put on, I have some discussion on that item. Um, evidently, we've got.
Excuse me, I have Dr. Traska speaking now.
Well, I'm gonna start off, sir, by, by, by saying I, I appreciate uh. I appreciate the openness and willingness to, to, to share those comments, I feel. Quite frankly, and I'm gonna put my neck out there, that I feel every board member needs to have a voice, I feel um. We are making tremendous progress as an institution, and I've talked to each one of you individually about that. Um, have had great compliments from each of you a, at different levels. But what bothers me most is what just happened. Mr. Hyon, I, I feel, I'm trying to get to know you as board members, uh. I want nothing more than Lewis and Clark, as we talked about eight months ago, to be the best community college, not only in the state, but in the country. And I can do it. No problem, no doubt, because I have a great team behind me. We need the board to be aligned, we need the board to focus on what's in the best interest of the institution together. I know that's possible, I know that's possible. But I ask very respectfully, let's respect one another, I don't, I don't need to speak. You know, board member Wertz wants to say a few things, let's let him speak, I, I. I, I'm, I'm just getting to the point of, of extreme frustration with this division, um, I think last week there was a tremendous opportunity to create a balance. But that was passed up on, that's my opinion. I appreciate each of you very much, probably more than words can say, but I need everybody to be on the same team, just as you have said, we are on the same team. That includes the board, let us do our work, let us, let us get a little dangerous with what we can accomplish as a team. I think it's possible, but, but I, but I would ask that we all be respectful and be kind to one another and look out for one another and know that our hearts are in this for the right reason. Because to me, it, 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 it's, it's, I think, getting a little bit in our way. I give a lot of credit, if not every bit of credit, to the team on this campus for embracing me. Um, and, and embracing the vision that from very first day, even before accepting this job that I put out there to grow. Uh, to come together, to be collaborative, and today we just adopted core values that were voted on by our team. And those are going to guide us, those are going to direct us into the future. And if I, if I would be so bold to say my expectation of everyone is to focus on the future and to be respectful, and I, I, you know. And to take that out, you know, for what it's worth, I, I, you know, I, I just feel that. We can't get in our own way, you know, so um, if, if we can move forward together as a board, um, and as a college. I wasn't here two years ago, I don't know, I mean, of course, you can read and you hear things, um, I feel our faculty are, are amazing individuals. They put a voice out there, I think we need to hear that voice, um, as you said, David, I'm certainly gonna work with everybody on this campus. You know, with every, every fiber of my being and with all my heart, but uh, you know, we need to move together. So trust in the process, trust in what we're doing and, and put a little faith and trust in one another as board members, I'm, I'm saying that with all, with, with the most respect I possibly can. Words get a little lame after a while, but you get where I'm coming from and I, I hope we can continue to work forward. And I would be interested in hearing uh, Chair Dwight's comments, um, I'm just curious. Um, and so if you would indulge me with that, I would, I would appreciate it, but uh, let's move together, um, forward, so. Um, and, and, and I will also say, I, I, I just, because my heart sunk, I want to acknowledge the third individual who was going to make a comment from the faculty. I think that's also symbolic, we need to hear people, I mean, you know, I, I don't, I, I haven't met all the faculty, but I just feel horrible that we cut them out. You know, feedback is feedback, you know, um, you know, in this line of work, I often say you can be the juiciest peach, right? You know, um, in the bunch, but there's still people that don't like peaches, that's the way it goes, right? So some people don't like those cheesy analogies, but that's the way I look at this work, that's the way I look at each of us. If our hearts are in it for the right reason and we can look each other in the eye and say, I, I may not agree with you a hundred percent, but I respect where your heart is and why you're doing this work, and so um. I just have a high expectation of all of us, sir, and that, and that starts with respect, so I apologize to that faculty member who was cut off. And um, would hope that you would come back and share those concerns with us, thank you. And I really don't need the applause, uh, this is about all of us, but I appreciate that, thank you, and thank you, sir.
Okay, Dwight, you have something?
Yes, uh. You know, we had the uh, special meeting and the presentation was made, and there was no response, uh. We had no response since then, I put this on the discussion item, I thank you, Dr. Crass, for your comments, I wish, I support you a hundred percent. And the fact that we need to work together and respect each other and listen to each other's input. We have a, we keep hearing the name team, but it doesn't sound like we're a team if we're divided so well. And we're not working together and we're working against each other, and I, it hurts my heart to see this from this organization. We've got such great people here, and we can do such great things, and we're trying to, we're, we're imploding amongst ourselves. And my suggestion is to try to work together, is have a uh, organization, at least two people from the faculty association, maybe a couple more. Two board members. Dr. Traska. And uh, possibly two people from the outside that uh, kind of a neutral, that have board involvement to where they know, they're born, built on board of boards, but know how they're supposed to work. Possibly two people from the foundation board. And have those six, eight, ten people sit down and try to iron out what our differences are and try to. Work together and come up with a, a, a better plan, and at least sit down and know what, what each other's complaints are. And listen, and take the feedback, not cut them off at, at the microphone, just hear what they have to say. So that's my suggestion, that's why I put that on there, and hopefully the, the faculty association would be willing to do that. I don't know if we, a couple of board members are willing to do that, Dr. Traska would be willing to do that, and perhaps two people from the foundation board. That's my thoughts, I'm looking for feedback from the board, other board members.
Well, of course, I have to do what you said, Dwight, as well as Dr. Traska, I commend the faculty for what they did, seventy percent on a survey is amazing. And also, everyone needs to be evaluated, and we need evaluation as well, so I, I appreciate what you all have done, bringing things to our attention, we need to know what you're thinking. Without feelings of retaliation, so I thank you for that.
Mr. Chairman, could I make a comment? Well, I, I guess I looked at this the wrong way, I mean, there are a lot of encouraging things in the survey, so I was glad to see it, I was afraid that we were gonna hear comments without knowing. Without seeing something written down, so I was happy to get the survey so I could see it, and there are a lot of encouraging comments in there. I would encourage everyone who hasn't looked at it to look at it, because there are, you know, many positive things in there, and the biggest positive comment was uh, the hiring of Dr. Traska. And um, this board unified to do that, I think we need to focus on that. I think the pandemic has hurt uh. Interpersonal, you know, discussions, you know, none of us have been on campus. I, myself, I try to talk to people, you know, in these meetings, before the meetings, all the meetings we had before, I would try to talk to them, well, you don't have an opportunity on Zoom. I think that, I feel it's Dr. Traska's responsibility to work with the faculty, and when I talked to him about this after the meeting. I put it on him to find out what the problems were, find out what specifically, you know, the whole groups upset, or it's a few people or whatever, I feel it's his responsibility. Not mine to talk directly to the faculty, I think that would be micromanaging, so I, I would like to. I, I would like to give him the opportunity first, you know, to work these things out, and he is our representative on campus. And, you know, should be listening to the faculty. I think we all have common, a common goal here. I think we've been painted with a, you know, an unpleasant brush, I guess you could say, but we, we all want the college to succeed. We all want the college to do well. We, I feel that the college has to have a strong financial footing in order to go into the future. And I know, I've said this before, change is unpleasant. Nobody likes change. Everybody wants things to stay the same, what they're comfortable with, but we're not gonna survive if we don't change. You can look at our enrollment numbers. We have to make some changes, so that's what this board has been doing. Our focus has been on enrollment, recruitment, marketing. And also, I want to point out, there have been very few votes where we have been divided as a board. There have been a few, but I'd say that's normal. For the most part, we, we agree. We vote with very few negatives. So I would encourage you to look, go back and look and see how many times we, we, we've disagreed. And also, I'd like to point out that there are very few times, if I can think of one, when maybe we voted on the Brown Street properties, but when we have not done with, done, done what the president recommended. So I think we all have full confidence in him and are allowing him. Some of the comments imply that we're not, we're getting in his way, but they're, to my knowledge, I can't think of hardly anything that he's done that I haven't agreed with. So I just wanted to give you another perspective, that maybe things aren't quite as horrific as they're being painted to be. And we do support Dr. Traska. I do have faith in him that he can run a college, and I do have faith that he can work with the faculty and resolve these issues, but, you know, if we need to get more involved, we can.
I thought that we worked with the faculty when we were without a president for a while. We had meetings. Two board members could go and visit with the department and ask for input. So I, I, I guess I'm befuddled that we're accused, or I'm accused, of not listening to faculty. I've encouraged Dr. Traska to listen. He has team members. We started the team. He came along, and he's a team guy, and he, you know, I guess in his past, he did the same thing, and he's got teams here working together. I, I don't understand where you're not being heard, because personally, I thought you were being heard by the board, by the new president, and by all board members. That was my interpretation. That you were being heard, and that's why these teams are working, and why we're supposed to go work together as a team. So, you know, maybe there's just a total misunderstanding of definition. I think we've beaten that horse enough for right now.
Uh, David, evidently, it's not working.
What?
It's not working. That's the problem. If we, if, if we think we've been here, we're hearing people, but evidently we're not, because they wouldn't be here tonight. So I, I'd highly recommend consider my, my offer.
I think if Dr. Traska wants to implement that, I'm for it.
Also, David-
Yeah, we can discuss that.
There's a, that's a two-part, on A1, it's two parts, actually. It was a faculty results. The other one was an email discussion. If I like to move on to that, that's okay.
Go ahead.
When we started talking about the Brown Street properties, it was taken to the Buildings and Grounds Committee. And we, we talked about it, discussed it. And then we voted on it. We give a recommendation. The board didn't follow it, but they voted on it. But it was, it was put out in the public, and we voted on it, and it was discussed before meetings. But I was very concerned when I got an email a couple of weeks ago. It was emailed to the board, and the, I'll read it. "I like the recommendation on the sale of the Lincoln School at the May meeting. I've never heard a positive statement about the Lincoln School. The taxpayers were outraged when they found out that taxpayer money was being wasted on the school. In the last few years, taxpayers have been wanting the school sold. LCC did not use it and has no need for the school. Quote, 'We are ready to vote to sell the property. If we can't use the money, reduce the debt, we should use the money to start working on the main building until we can get the state for 35 million.' What bothers me there is we are ready to vote to sell the property. We've never discussed it. It was never brought up in, it was never brought up in discussion. It was never taken to the grounds committee. So how can we say we are ready to vote to sell the property? That's my question."
You can be ready to vote yes or no on the sale of property or lease? That's what we do as a board.
You're kind of missing my point here, is it sounded like we're at a group meeting, and our group is ready to sell the property. It sounds to me like a violation of the Meetings Act.
You're totally, you're totally incorrect.
Well, I've talked to the board at the Illinois Trustees Association and voiced my concerns, and they suggested that it perhaps send it to the Attorney General for an investigation to see if there's anything there. But to see that we're ready to sell property, we haven't discussed it, really concerns me.
Now, to me, that sounds like a very divisive move. We want to be team players, and we want to get along as a board, but getting the Attorney General involved seems pretty divisive. We're not meeting, we're not colluding, so if you want to assume otherwise, I guess I can't change your mind on that, but I think, in my opinion, it's pretty much general knowledge that the Lincoln School hasn't been utilized like everybody wanted it to be. So I think we need to look at, you know, what we need to do with it. So.
Great. I agree wholeheartedly, but that's an discussion of the board. That's not, let's vote to sell it, and then we'll talk about it.
Well, nobody can tell me how to vote, so I'm not gonna vote on something unless I've been informed on what it is, and so I think we've got a long way to go before we can sell that, so.
Agree. There's, there's, uh, but there's a discussion later on this agenda about it, and it'll be paid off in like next year. And there's, Dr. Craska needs the time to develop that property and use it for a good use, so we don't want to sell it before he has opportunity to do that. But my point is, those emails, that we're ready to sell it before we even talked about it, really concerns me.
Kevin, can you report on AJ? ICC TA meeting.
If we're ready, I'll say a few words. We met on May 4th by, by Zoom. And I'll just hit a few high points. We probably met for about two hours, but one of the things that was quite a point of discussion was the House Bill 3145, which is a provision that community colleges of certain sizes would have to have sub-districts. And that was vehemently opposed by the trustees and the trustees association, mainly because it, while it might be appropriate for some the community college districts, we generally, we, being the trustees association, chafe at the, chafe of the fact that the state of Illinois tries to force something like this, and without input, and it, it was a very parochial issue, really isolated to one particular community college. And anyway, I won't go into it any further. So we were against that. We did, we, the trustees association did support a 3% increase for increasing our fiscal year 22 funding for community colleges, and an additional $50 million for the monetary award program. Now, who knows whether we'll get it or not, but I think that it wouldn't even be talked about if it wasn't a certain possibility of that happening. Also, on the monetary award programs, they would like to have, there's a House bill, actually been proposed, to set aside 15% of the monetary award money for community colleges. Right now, it, it fluctuates around 15%, but, you know, tends to be less than 15%. And this House bill, if passed, would, would establish a floor, a minimum of 15%. I, I did learn that all of the community colleges in the state, with the exception of one, actually belong to the trustees association, that Rock Valley College does not belong, but they are being, they have approached the association to become members. I'm not sure if that includes all the community colleges in the Chicago area. I think they may be in a, like Chicago often is, they may be in their own little separate category. And the last thing is, the association in their 2022 budget is proposing no increase in the dues. And that concludes my report. Unless there are questions.
No questions? We have AK a video podcast, Mike Lemmons.
To introduce Mike Lemmons tonight. Mike is a faculty member in our radio broadcasting program, and he's the manager of our station. And normally, I would say that Mike's here to tell you about what the future of radio sounds like. But Mike, in his usual manner, is way ahead of the curve in terms of being innovative and using technology. So tonight, you're not only gonna hear, but you're gonna see what the future of radio looks like. Thanks, Mike.
Thank you, Jill. I hope everyone can see the presentation now there on the screen. I don't, I'm not sure if you can or not. So I'm coming to you from our podcasting studio now, and you know, media technology is constantly evolving. No longer can we think about media in its traditional sense. All media is melding into a digital platform. We do radio really well, and we have for a long time. We have a number of students enjoying great success all across the country. But we need to become a little more visual medium in order to attract a student who has so many media choices now, more than ever before, but also to prepare our students for this ever-changing profession. Although we've produced and distributed visual content, we know we needed to produce so much more of it, and to make it look more professional. Our students have been doing audio podcasts for some time now, but with the internet speeds increasing tremendously, with cameras and video switching equipment becoming much more affordable, video podcasting and visual radio is something that is possible for us now. So thanks to Dr. Lane and Dr. T and all those involved in the approval process. With Perkins grant funds, we were able to convert one of our existing spaces into a state-of-the-art video podcasting room. Now, not only can we create standalone video podcasts, but we can stream video and, and record what we're already doing on radio, and having our listeners be able to see us as well as hear us. So if I could, I'm gonna, I'll take you through the room a little bit, and then I'll play a short video clip I put together on some of the things we've produced. I do a podcast where I interview successful students. We have a sports show that streams live every morning on Facebook for two hours, and we also have some other students doing some things with, with video. We can't highlight it all, but I'll show it to you. As you can see now, that I'm on a camera one. This is a camera two in our studio, camera three. Camera four gives you a wide shot of our entire space. There are other things we can do with logoing and things like that, but I'll play a clip of some of the things we've done, and then I'll talk on the other side.
Welcome back to the WLCA Sports Show on 89.9. We have the absolute pleasure to be joined with legendary Cardinals broadcaster, Mr. Ricky Horton. Mr. Horton, how you doing this morning?
I'm doing terrific, Ethan. Good to be with you again, and even though it's awful cold here in St. Louis, I know spring training's right around the corners.
Welcome into addition, another edition of the Air Check with me, Mike Lemmons, broadcast coordinator of the radio broadcasting program at Lewis and Clark Community College. This is a show where we catch up with former students to see how they're doing and just have some fun with it. On today's show, we have, I'm really excited about being enjoyed by this guy. It's Mike Keith Teague, who was in our program just a few years ago. And his rise to fame has been pretty much what we would consider to be meteoric in this profession. So without further ado, here's DJ Mike Keith. What's up?
Hey, what's up, Mike?
And so it was so cool to go to, be able to go to Nashville. You know, I have my CMA Award. And to have that whole experience where we went on stage, and we were on national TV, we got to do an acceptance speech and get all dressed up, and afterwards, Garth Brooks won that night, so then we got invited to his after-party, so, because he won, and so then we're hanging out with Garth Brooks with our CMA Awards, and it's like, oh my God, is, is this real life? Like, holy cow!
It's the WLCA Sports Show on 89.9, and we have the absolute pleasure to be joined by Cardinals broadcaster for KMOX, Mr. Mike Claiborne. Mr. Claiborne, how you doing this morning?
Ethan, I'm doing great, man, but please don't call me mister, man. You can call me Mike. You can call me for lunch. You can call me for dinner, but don't call me Mike.
You got it. You're, you're, you're Mike. You're Mike now. All right.
Man, that, that photo that you used looks like I just ate Joey.
It was, it was a photograph. It was, blame, blame Joey for it, because it was a photograph he sent me to use in a presentation to promote the program, so it's all his fault.
Yeah, it looks like I was just finishing like a final or a report on how to eat another full-grown human being.
Now, you're in St. Louis, but recently also Chicago was added too, so you're in both markets. Tabby, that's a pretty big deal, right?
It's so exciting.
Not only to be in a large market like St. Louis, but Chicago's what, the number three market in, in the nation? And you're on both of those stations now. How, what's that been like?
It's been incredible just to see the support that we've had. It's, all listeners supported. And we recently were named Station of the Year. And it's just been so much fun just to see how people are enjoying boosts.
Thanks again for joining. Really appreciate it.
My pleasure. Peace, guys. Good to be with you.
Have a good one. Thanks again for joining us this morning, Mike. I almost called you Mr. Claiborne, but I, I was able to hold myself in, but thanks again. We really appreciate you joining us on, and you enjoy the start of the season, and hopefully we can talk to you a little bit into the season about some Cardinals baseball also.
Well, Ethan and Nate, anytime you guys want me, just give me a holler. It's great to visit with you guys, and best of luck with your careers.
In addition to being able to do video podcasting from our studio, we have the capabilities of going remote now. About a week and a half ago, we covered the Alton Jersey game live from Busch Stadium, and we did audio as well as video. Our equipment to do this hadn't come in at this time, so we thank Brian McKinney for using his personal equipment to help us make this happen, but this is something we'll be able to do going forward as well. So yeah, that's, that's us.
AL commencement 2021 preview. Anyone going to address that, or?
Go ahead. Thank you, Brett. Lost track. I was dumbfounded by the presentation. It was really interesting. So the commencement overview, just very briefly, because coming up very quickly, March 19th, or March, I wish, May 19th, 7:00 PM. This year, we're doing something different, obviously because of the COVID restrictions involved. We're being hosted by Alton, the Alton School District at Public School Stadium. And we should, we should point out that they've been gracious not to charge us for the use of the facility, and they're helping us with the rental chairs that are necessary to support our, our celebration as well, because it's being used this year by, by several schools. So the idea is, I just like to point out too, that we have a lot of people on campus working on this project right now. The commencement committee, which is a standing faculty committee, but also about 10,000 other people around campus trying to get this organized. We typically do not do large outdoor events, so this is a huge lift for us. And it's taken a lot of details and planning and organization to get this pulled off. But with a few, with, with a lot of help from the people who traditionally organize our indoor event, that usually takes- But with a few, with with a lot of help from the people who traditionally organize our indoor event that usually takes place in this facility. I think we're going to be able to pull off a fairly successful event at this point. We have about a hundred and twenty-ish graduates that will be walking across the the stage on the field at Public School Stadium. And then, of course, you all have the materials that have been presented to you for participating, if you would like as well. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Is it gonna rain?
We, that we're not, we weren't talking about that. We all had an agreement that we were not going to mention the weather. We do have a backup, so it's glad, I'm glad you asked. We do have a backup. So the following day, if it's not raining two days in a row, the following day would be the backup time.
Brett, what what is the total attendance that you expect?
Well, what we've done too is part of this, as part of the safety protocols is to issue, did we see two, was it two? Two tickets per graduate. So we figure a hundred and twenty graduates. We have forty or fifty faculty that will be attending. We have staff members that will be attending, board members that will be attending, and then two per two hundred and twenty times two approximately. That gives you your number. We we anticipate the way they've set up the event is that we'll be, we'll be using one side of the field, basically. Everything will be down on the field and the the crowd will be up in one side of the stands, basically. Any other questions? Fantastic. Thanks, Brett.
AM, the student newspaper, who's reporting on that?
So continuing on the theme that we saw through Mr. Lemon's presentation of excellence in media, I would just like to make the board aware that our student newspaper, The Bridge, has won twenty-two awards through the Illinois Community College Journalism Association. So this is the organization that we've been a part of. The advisor to The Bridge, Louise Jett, is also part of the advisory board of the Illinois Community College Journalism Association. We've hosted that conference a few times. And when you look at the awards that we've received, what you see is several different areas of excellence. Photography, stories, columns, front page. So our students have shown their talents in ways that have made us proud. In particular, we got second place in the Mike Foster General Excellence Award, which is an overall award. And so, you know, in in that sense, our newspaper can be said to be, you know, at least in that sense, the second best newspaper in the state. But when you see the list of stories, you know, again, some things are very serious, other things are more humorous in tone. But we're just proud that our students have been able to excel and get some real-world experience that can translate into employment. Are they able to show their talents and skills in ways that were representative of our institution? Thank you.
Pharmacy tech program update.
Dr. Lane will do that one.
Just a quick update on where we are on pharmacy tech. We, the board approved a position and the ICCB has approved the program. So we have the job posted. We've got several applicants at this point. Dr. Seuss Orwinski and I will be working with the search committee on hiring a person for that program. The plan is to have them over this summer on a contractual basis. Help flesh out the existing program and then they would start as a full-time faculty member in August for the fall semester. So as soon as we get that person hired, we'll work with Laura Inlow and Media Services to do kind of a marketing campaign to make sure the community knows that we're offering that program. So we're very.
A lot of person goes to a gas station one time in that period.
Any questions?
Jill, I think I, I'm not sure exactly where.
I wonder if I need to get gas. Are we gonna run out?
About other health science related.
We've, we've met with.
Do it.
Dr. Swirinski and I have met with BJC and OSF.
It goes in like this, right?
LPN Laboratory. Surgical equipment sterilization. Sue.
It's all you want to pull.
So we're looking at programs where, for example, the surgical sterilization. They've got people, the hospitals have people working in housekeeping who could take this additional training. It would be a certificate. And then they would find some upward mobility in their jobs. So we're looking at programs with a labor market demand where we can have business partners like with the two hospitals. And that don't require a ton of really expensive equipment or the the clinical portion is done in the hospital with the hospital's equipment. So we're really trying to kind of balance those out and those were the programs that kind of rose to the surface in terms of what the hospitals are looking for, having trouble hiring.
I know. I haven't get rid of it all, damn it, won't leave.
That's really great to hear because somebody needs to take care of us elderly folks.
Dr. Lane, were you going to also provide some insights in diesel?
Sure. And Dr. Swirinski is here too for additional questions, but we received a grant that has allowed us to purchase equipment to include diesel in our automotive program. And there's a course scheduled for fall and then two courses in the spring. So it's it's kind of ready and up and running. Sue, comments, additional info?
Yeah, those three courses will be just a small certificate that are attached to our automotive tech program that exists. If we find more and more interest in diesel, then we can build that out. So right now, this is going to be used as kind of a, you know, thermometer to see where we are, how much interest we have as far as enrollment. And then we can, you know, we can kind of build out. Right now, we have enough room in our facilities. We're going to use some outdoor space for storage of some of the donated engines that we have. And I think, I think we can make, you know, start the program that way. And then we might have some growing pains if if we need to build out, but we'll know that. We'll know that we'll have good enrollment before we do that next step.
Any other questions? Thank you.
AP Manny Jackson Center for the Humanities Update, including Lincoln School Cornerstone.
Yeah, so quickly, sir, the Manny Jackson Center for Humanities Update is just acknowledging that today we did have a leadership meeting where we focused on Manny Jackson. And really brainstormed opportunities and ideas to really advance just essentially the work. Or advance opportunities of utility of that space. And so we'll, our plan is to, we're going to do some community surveying. We're going to do an internal survey. The the community, what we're planning to do is six forums in June, three virtual, three in-person at the Manny Jackson Center for Humanities in Edwardsville. Really to just gauge community perspective and opinion. And I plan in July with a leadership retreat to discuss that feedback and then ultimately we hope sometime in the fall to have some level of recommendation to the board, whether that's to sell the property or whether that's to continue investing in the property with specific programs or opportunities. And, you know, I think the point there is we'll be sure to vet every possible angle to be sure that we're making the best decision for the institution. The other part of that is, last week I had the opportunity to meet a gentleman by the name of Herman Shaw. And I, I told Herman, he had asked if I would please show the rendition that's in the board book to all of you as board members. As you know, you you approved a month or so ago, the positioning of a historical marker at the Manny Jackson Center for Humanity to recognize the history and legacy of that building. And so that recognition is happening on May twenty-second in Edwardsville. So, so the the interesting dynamic is Herman Shaw and the cornerstone, we have the cornerstone and he was hoping that the cornerstone could be placed with the historical marker. And after some discussion with himself and Mr. Walker, you know, it was determined that let's look at some other options. So perhaps in the next couple of months, I may be bringing back to the board something we may want to do to recognize or reposition that cornerstone at Manny Jackson. So really, this is just FYI and because Herman said, you know, they had put a little bit of time and effort and resources into this rendition, I did want it to be public knowledge to to show what that artist has done and what the vision there is. The other good news is Herman and his team have the resources to support any work that we would do with the cornerstone. So perhaps we'll see a recommendation in future months, but this is just an FYI. And if you can be out there on the twenty-second, please do plan to attend. Thank you.
You're going to continue with the St. Louis?
Yes, yeah, I just saw that, so I'll do that. So this is really just an update to the board. We'll be meeting with Brian Durham, we being Dobby Heron, Dr. Lane, myself and Brian Durham to really discuss kind of the vision for East St. Louis as it relates to Lewis and Clark. But what we did was back in, at the end of April, we requested an extension of funding for the East St. Louis location. And that was approved by the ICCB, ending December thirty-first of twenty-one. Currently, the grant ends June thirtieth. So we have a little bit of an extension to really get a better sense of what the opportunity would be there. Part of why that's happening and actually the the opportunity to extend that funding came from ICCB, but we had to apply. Is there are some, some changes perhaps coming down the pipeline at ICCB as it relates to the to the East St. Louis location and the consortium model that they're really trying to 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 promote there. So because all of that is up in the air, we felt it was only a reasonable option for us is to is to perhaps extend the funding. It's now been approved. And to be able to move forward in supporting the work we're doing in East St. Louis. The idea is ultimately to bring a proposal to the board next month. But this is just to give you kind of a heads up on that's what's happening. This is kind of moving a little bit quick. But we need more information from ICCB in terms of what they're looking at doing. And kind of what value we as Lewis and Clark can bring. We feel it's important for us to be in all, I mean, as many communities as we can and as long as they'll have us. But the work we do extends well beyond right here in Godfrey. So we're hoping to see what ICCB says and when we meet with them, we'll bring that back to the board as a recommendation for your approval. So this is just again, an FYI to let you know, we do have the approval to extend that funding and we want to be able to move forward with that. So. And that would be through the end of this year. And this is not a recommendation. This is just FYI. We bring that to the board for approval next month. Thank you.
You doing the early retirement summary also?
Yeah, I can, I can do that. One is why I know our HR director is here as well. But so as as is outlined in the board book, the board approved an ERI program several months ago and that ERI program has concluded. And in front of you is kind of an outline of, you know, the outcome there, where we have listed those individuals who are officially retiring and those that are taking advantage of the early retirement system. So we've outlined the impact, the financial impact of this program. And we're asking for, you know, the board to be be aware of this. It's informational. So but we're asking for the for the board to recognize this. And and I think, you know, a big part of this is to thank those individuals. Everyone on this list has dedicated, you know, their life or a big part of their life and career to Lewis and Clark. And, you know, they're, they're leaving it in good hands, right, with the rest of us. So we just appreciate all of their hard work and effort. And appreciate too, the board's willingness and openness to allow administrations to put forth an ERI to both recognize the value and commitment of these individuals. So want to thank them as well. That concludes the report there. Thank you.
You normally give us the informational items. You want to do that also?
I I think these are, I I don't have necessarily anything formal for any of these, sir, but if there are questions, I'm happy to entertain those or to delegate those to someone who can. So thank you. Are there any questions on those informators? There's some details on those respective pages, so certainly if you've had a chance to look at those. This is all pretty standard, standard stuff as well. So and just information.
Anyone have any questions with regard to informational items? If not, we ready to move on to the executive team reports?
Yes, sir. So as the nutrition is, we're going to provide the board updates from our our executive team. We'll start with Dr. Lane. We'll move into operations with Jill, Jeff, Mary, Sean, and then Brett, since he's also going to be up in the mover team reports, just ask if Brett can do his enrollment. Just wrap that into his mover team report. So, Dr. Lane, thank you.
Sure, I'm happy to. So there's a lot going on in academic affairs. And one of the things that's taking a lot of folks' time, but it's really pushing us toward progress in a new direction are a variety of searches that are happening on campus. And I will say the search that I'm the most excited about is the one to hire my replacement as dean. I'm I'm ready, ready for that to happen. So I want to thank all the folks who are serving on those committees. They're they're time-consuming, but they're really important. So. A couple of updates on modes of instruction. As you know, due to COVID, we developed some new modes of instruction for our campus. We've surveyed students. We've met with faculty. And many of those modes are, I think, going to continue with us. We've also developed a two new modes of instruction. One is blend flex and the other is competency-based education. So we are looking to use CARES money to outfit additional classrooms to do blend flex, which is basically some of the people can be in the physical room face-to-face and some can join the class via Zoom. So thanks to Jeff Watson and his staff, they've worked a lot to make sure we're getting the right equipment. Thanks to Mary and Brett and Mary's staff for dealing with the bids that we've had to do to get that equipment. Thanks to some of the faculty for bringing up something called the Owl, which is a three sixty camera. Joel Hall had been using that in his classroom during COVID. And it turns out that's going to be an integral part of how we outfit these blood flex classrooms. So lots of innovation, lots of change, lots of training. And I would say lots of bravery on the part of the faculty who are like going into these uncharted waters and to our students as well. Competency-based education is for welding and Travis Jumpers here tonight. He's done such a huge amount of work on that. So is Dr. Seuss Orwinski and other faculty who are going to be teaching gen ed courses in this format. It's at the HLC. Fingers crossed that it will be back from the HLC in time for fall semester. Travis is, Travis is ready to roll with that. And if not, maybe we look at a second eight-week start or a spring start. But that's going to be the first, I believe Melissa Bachelor will be close behind in terms of looking at competency-based education in early childhood. So that's very exciting. I sit on the chief academic officer monthly meetings. And Lewis Clark as like the head of the pack when it comes to these kind of innovations. So I'm always proud to give my updates on these meetings about what we're doing. And thanks to Dr. T and his support and his gentle nudging of us to move move forward in these areas. So I already talked to you about new programs we're looking at. So thanks for that question. I also want to say, you know, it seems like yesterday when we got our ten-year accreditation from HLC. But starting in September, we're going to start writing again and it's a, it's a huge effort. It's critical to the college and, but I think we have a good team of folks who are going to write that. We have a lot of good things to report to the HLC that we're doing. And that would be for an April twenty twenty-three actual visit with another ten-year accreditation. That's our expectation. So. I had my first town hall with the faculty a week or two ago and there were 52 people there. I was very happy. And lots of great feedback, lots of good suggestions that we're going to try to implement or that I've passed on to those who can implement them. So again, thanks to the faculty for that. And we've got program review mover team and scheduling mover team that I think I reported to at a recent meeting who's still moving forward. So lots of moving parts and some of these we are, you know, as people have said before, building the plane while we fly it, but we've got a lot of smart, innovative, brave people who are willing to help us push forward, sometimes in warp speed because of what we've had to learn from COVID. So any questions?
No, but I want to thank you and your teams, Dr. Lane. Great stuff. Thank you.
Good evening again. Just a couple of quick updates from campus operations. I just wanted to remark that today is the last scheduled vaccine clinic today on campus. So again, I just want to thank our custodial security and maintenance teams who made that possible and and thank Madison County for giving us an opportunity to serve our community through those vaccine clinics. I also just wanted to make sure the board was aware of the announcement last week that we'll enter the bridge phase this Friday. So for us, that means some larger gatherings will be able to have up to 250 people or 60% capacity of the room, whichever is less for to host events again. So we're hopeful that our events venues will revenue might start picking up there as well. I wanted to mention the fact that our horticulture teams are working hard this week. They are doing a scaled down version of of our annual summer garden show that was designed this year in house by Katie Piper, who is our horticulturist and she along with Ethan Brush will be putting all those plants in the ground this week. So hopefully we're trying to still provide a nice backdrop for our graduates as they come hopefully to campus before commencement next week to get those traditional photos done. They're titling it Here Comes the Sun with kind of a nod to some optimism that we're looking forward to welcoming students back this fall. Jill mentioned the job searches. I just wanted to reiterate, as Gabe mentioned earlier today, we have 19 current job openings that there are search committees for. And I just want to say thank you to all of the members of our team who are leading and serving on those because they are really going to be important to the future of the college. And we're seeing some really strong candidate pools emerge from some of the national, local and regional advertising that we're doing for those. Let's see, we are doing some facilities and master planning as Dr. Traska talked about earlier today. As leadership, we discussed Manny Jackson, we've been doing some walkthroughs of the main complex and kind of going over those deferred maintenance lists. Thank you to the board today because that top item on our deferred maintenance list was approved along with the CBD support to replace all those fire alarm systems and those 11 aging buildings. I also just wanted to provide the board with an update. We did mention this at the Buildings and Grounds Committee, but the Brown Street Houses Mobile Health Unit sales are going forward. We are working on advertising those locally this week. They will be on a site called govdeals.com. And we're hoping to see some live auction results forthcoming over the next few weeks. And of course, we'll report all final sales back to the board. Also, thank you for the approval to bid. We are looking at purchasing the HEPA filtration systems for some of our older classrooms as we prepare to welcome our students back to the fall. We just see that as a way to help mitigate risk and improve the air quality and some of our older buildings that are limited by their HVAC capabilities. And one final item I just want to mention, we are going to do an unveiling Monday at noon. And of course, everyone is welcome. We have a student Brianna Sack who has designed, she's an art student who's designed our interactive art mural. This is new to campus. We just want to provide a backdrop for, think the the Nashville Angel Wings, you know, something that people can pose in front of that helps promote the college, but we just know that this is a place where people come and take so many photos, family photos, social media photos. So it's going to have a bit of a blazer theme and we're going to unveil it Monday and invite our graduates again next Wednesday to come and get their pictures taken on campus. So any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Just want to go over, of course, in IT, we're always very busy constantly, but some of the things we've been working on lately in preparation for classes to get back on campus and the excitement that we might be able to do that hopefully in the fall. We're going around to every classroom, every lab, checking the equipment in there, the the computer workstation, the computers in the labs, the projectors, the phones, making sure that everything's working just to try to get ahead of any problems that may arise when students and faculty come back to campus. So we're doing that over the summer and then recently, we had training for blend flex for faculty. Faculty that will be teaching blend flex or interested in teaching it. And we had about 20 faculty that took that training and the training was delivered in three different sessions. Our manager of networking systems, Ron Wall, taught all three of those sessions and he said they went really well that there was a lot of ideas and discussions in those sessions and and different ways to to utilize that equipment to teach our students. And for any faculty that want to take this training, I'm sure we'll be offering it throughout the summer. Some some of the, some of our equipment in some of our labs, we we have some older equipment. In a nutshell, it it can't be upgraded anymore in the running Windows 7 and we need to get those to Windows 10. There was about 400 of these computers. We started this initiative in 2019. It kind of got stalled by COVID-19. But we're actually down to about 60 of those computers left to install and and get get us up to date on all those and I'm hopefully going to put in in the board book next month to to get those last 60 approved and that will have that done before the fall classes start. And then finally, we really utilize the hardware here as long as we can try to get every every bit of use that we can out of it. And eventually it does just become antiquated and unusable. We have a local company, CJD Recycling, coming to campus on Thursday, picking up a lot of older printers, even some some old cell phones, some old switches, routers and lots of different equipment. And they actually pay us for that scrap. So we do get something back from it. And they'll also take old monitors for free and things like that. So it's it's a it's a win win for us there. Is there any questions on IT? Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Mary.
Good evening. May 11th, 2021 is not only the first board meeting that we've had back on campus, but the date has another significance. It's tuition due date for the summer semester. So today we've had Versar's office activity that would involve collecting payments, installment plans. There's been financial aid activity. I was hoping to pull some numbers for tonight's meeting just to see how many payments we receive today, but the our cashiers were still in their session. So I'm going to take that as positive. They're still collecting payments. But we have payments, we have financial aid, we have third party payers. So over the next few days, we'll be able to see how our numbers have held up as far as students are just going to say butts in seats, but how many we can keep in the classes? That's what it is. So beyond that, then we are also working on looking towards the close of the fiscal year. June 30th is not all that far away. Unfortunately, we have moved towards cutting off our purchasing for this year. We ask all of our team members to plan and to get those purchases in by April 30th. Want to give kudos to our purchasing coordinator, Wendy Phipps. She processes all of those particularly by herself when we're in this remote environment. At one particular time, I just pulled a report to see what we had out there and we still had 300 requisitions waiting to turn into purchase orders. That doesn't count what she's done, had done already and what was yet to come. So that's a big project and she does that every year without complaint. As far as big projects, I've got Cindy McCoy working this year on the budget with Nancy's retirement on April 30th. As she has come forward and offered to help to put actually lead the boots on the ground efforts to get the budget pulled together. And of course, then we have a great team behind her, you know, backfilling her positions. But she's working on updating a lot of our operating information and we'll get the operating budget ironed out and then we're going to look at those non operating budgets and and plan for those. So she and I will be spending a lot of time together for the next few weeks. But the positive side on on the budget, I would say, let's just focus on the revenues. We have actually received three out of seven final EAVs for the counties. We've received Madison, which is of course our biggest county, has a 4.78% increase in the EAV. And then we've received the final EAVs from Morgan and Scott are two small counties and those are very small, but they're looking at a 1% increase. State revenues, we're budgeting for flat dollars. That's what the governor's recommendation has been. Of course, we will not know what those last numbers are until the budget's final, which is likely to be May 29th. When they have to actually have it turned in. And as long as funding stays flat and we maintain our piece of the pie and to maintain that piece of the pie, we have to keep our credit hours up. So the good news is with the last enrollment reports, those are gradually going up. We've seen an increase for summer and an increase for fall. So the hope is that those numbers will hold true and we can keep our same piece of the pie when it comes to state funding. But I'm excited to see those numbers actually trend upward again. So those are the big things that are happening in the finance office. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. And Dr. Hill and then Brett, you're moving in. Thank you.
Hello again. So what I remembered that I should have it wasn't on my list, but I want to make sure the board is aware that there was since there wasn't an honors banquet this year, we do have a video presentation online of student awards. It's typically the board members invited to the honors banquet. But again, it highlights some of the best and brightest at Lewis Clark Community College. So if you're if you're bored at home, you're tired of watching cat videos, you can watch the uplifting student awards video and and see some of the wonderful things our students have done. It's it's been a challenging year with some of the areas in student engagement, but we finished out pretty strong. So with student activities, we had most of our events online or virtually, but in the last few weeks, we've managed to bring students on campus, which has been wonderful for us in this space. Thanks in part to Brian McKinney. We had Star Wars, The Force Awakens on May 4th last week. We also had students on campus for a food truck. So it was nice to see that. And then also in line with some of the lifting of restrictions, student clubs and organizations have also started meeting in person on campus. Athletics has also been challenging this semester, but we managed to get through it and we still have four teams that are active. And those teams also have some playoff chances and that's what's good. So men's and women's soccer are having good seasons. Baseball is having a pretty good season and golf is also having a pretty good season. All those teams still have at least one more match left. We're excited to see what they can do. We've managed to dodge COVID, rescheduling, weather, wet fields, all kinds of things, but it's I'm proud to say we got through it. Already mentioned the bridge and I'm proud of the things they've done. SGA has also had a very active year. Mr. Copeland, if you want to talk about it, feel free to as well, but SGA, the Student Government Association has been very much behind a hygiene drive. And so the idea is to collect hygiene products for students. We've had donations come in. We've had days where we've given things out. And it's nice to see this group of students in their leadership roles. They constantly want to give back to the community and give back to other students. And they do that themselves. I don't have to push them to do that. You know, for me, it's I play referee and try to keep infighting down and those kinds of things, but at their core, they're generous people who want to help other students and it's very great to see that. And then they also elected officers this year, so we'll be ready to go and get things moving along. So we have a new president, vice president and treasurer. But that's student engagement. Any questions? Mr. Copeland, sorry. Any comments?
Just going to say thank you.
Okay. Thanks.
And that will conclude the executive reports and I think Brett, you're going to come up and just move into mover team updates if that's okay, Chairman.
Absolutely. The enrollment task force is has been meeting regularly or continues to meet regularly and has recently been charged with switching the model that we use to advise students here on campus. Previously, students were assigned an academic advisor either by their last name or by the zip code in which they lived. This is requires that our advisors, because of that arrangement, to know a little bit about every program that we offer. We're ready to switch that program advising model so that our advisors now specialize in academic programs when they advise. In this scenario, all criminal justice students will receive advising from the same advisor. This makes it easier on the advisor and hopefully increases the quality of the advising engagement with the students. We're currently working with the IT department to configure the Alucion system to support this assignment of students. And we hope to have the model in place by July 1 and students actively being modeled or advised in this model moving forward after that. Any questions?
Thank you, Brett.
Brett, I Brett, I do have a question for you and I'm probably just going to put you on the spot here, but maybe you can you can tell me when you get a chance if you have to research it, but in our district, approximately how many students graduate from high school? This year, this.
You're right. I don't have the data, but I actually have seen that chart recently. And I know that Dennis and Dr. Dennis Creven is the researcher does have that data. IBHE actually produces not only current enrollment numbers, but also projected enrollment numbers for each of their school districts. So we have around, we do have, I mean, they're approximations in some of those instances, but we do have that data. I just don't have it with me tonight.
The president of Principia College today spoke at a meeting and he warned everyone that 2025 will be a real dip in age level children graduating from high school and or entering college. Is that correct? That's what he reported today. We're going to really have to be on the ball to keep the numbers up.
Now that if you if you look at the data around the COVID, there's actually a COVID baby bust as well. So what was predicted before, it may actually end up extending that data, that that decline in demographics. The the problem with looking at averages, however, is that we don't know how it applies to us in our district exactly. So while by on average, that decline is going to be true, there's a very specific analysis to find out what's going to impact each of our district's school districts.
Thank you. So we have a coordinator mover?
And Jessica, is Jessica?
Jessica will be virtual.
Hi, hope that you got all can hear me. My name is Jessica Noble. I am the program coordinator for criminal justice and have been so for five years. After the group met this past semester, a few times, we discussed what we thought we needed as coordinators. We decided that we should have a communication plan that will include all coordinators of academic programs. This will allow us to communicate monthly either by Zoom or in person. We plan to also in those meetings, you know, just discuss things and talk about how we can improve our our programs or anything that we're doing. This is also an avenue for us to share ideas about recruitment, advising, I apologize, I have my son in the background, and other things that are happening on campus that we can help with, like campus activities such as the hygiene drive. Other items we have discussed in our meetings are our roles in recruitment, which is a really, really big topic right now and we're we've got some really great ideas, working on compensation for coordinators that is fair and equitable across campus and how it is applied. We know that coordinators do a lot of different duties depending on the program, but we feel there needs to be a baseline of a minimum requirement that we can build from. We also wanted to look at how much time different responsibilities are taking for our coordinators, such as advising students, that kind of thing, and how we can pass these along to new coordinators when they come on board. We want to make sure they're up to date on what is expected of the job and kind of duties that we have. Our plan is to survey coordinators and to figure out how they are spending their time and how much time they actually spend on certain tasks. For example, advising enrolling students, recruitment, managing adjuncts, scheduling, et cetera. There's a lot more to it than that. Those are just a few. We utilize surveys to help understand where our faculty members' thoughts and concerns are and how we can make improvements. Lastly, I would like to thank all those who participated in this mover team and contributed their ideas. There's been a lot of meetings and to dedicate your time to an extra meeting is, is asking. And so we, I just want to thank everyone for that. There will be more updates in the future because we are doing a little bit more work with other things that go along with the coordination duties and things that I mentioned above, like recruitment and that kind of thing. Any questions I can take from anybody?
Laura Endlow next.
Thank you, Jessica.
Thank you.
Hello, you guys have already heard a little bit about our brand refresh and website refresh needs and efforts. And thank you for supporting the interact contract. That's going to go a lot, a long way to next steps for our project. The brand and website mover team is a little bit different than other mover teams that are, that are kind of situated around short-term goals and reaching those goals. This team will probably continue to meet over the two to three years that this project is going to continue. And we will kind of look at milestones rather than an end goal and the big thing about the mover team is that it's an interdepartmental team. That is something that I think has been largely missing in previous website redesigns, which have mostly been led around media and IT. This time, our team includes folks from adult education, from our faculty, from accounting, student success, financial aid, advising, athletics, and the enrollment center. So they will be really important in making sure that all those departments and all those constituencies have a consistent voice and feedback every step of the way throughout the website redesign process. We're a fairly new mover team and we first met on April 27th. And our main goal was to get on the same page. We went over the interact proposal that you all saw and approved tonight. And we all agreed to bring that to the board for approval. Our next meeting is actually going to take place this week because our next step is choosing a website content management system. And we have four different options that we're going to look at vetting pretty closely before getting a recommendation from the team and bringing it to the board for approval. So I think that's pretty much it for us for now, but you'll probably be hearing more from us as time goes on. So do I have any questions?
Thank you, Laura. And I know there's a lot coming down the pipeline from your team. So thank you for your leadership.
Dr. T, are you going to do the?
Yeah, sure. So this time we're going to do a little different. I'll just first want to give you an overview of our process, which I may have done several times, but we're getting close to concluding the strategic planning process. So what's happening now is you'll get a quick overview from each of the key direction leadership pairs. We have co-leaders for each key direction. The first is going to be Lori and Val. But what's happening next after this is we'll be sending out messages to the team. We're going to have four forums, which each will be focused on each respective key direction and will provide our team with an opportunity to provide feedback to get an orientation of each key direction. And then we'll include that feedback into the plan and then bring that to the board in June for adoption. So I want to thank the teams. I want to thank Dr. Kreeb, Dennis Kreeb for his phenomenal assistance in helping manage all of the data and discussions and putting it into a really nice template for us. So thank you, Dennis, for your leadership. And I'll hand it over to Dr. Artis and Dr. Harris for your presentation and then we'll move forward respectively, key direction two, three and four. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. And we'll try to be really quick. I know the night is getting a little bit long. But we are key direction one, which is expect enrollment improvement and maintain our current retention rates. And this actually started out as expect enrollment and retention improvement, but I'll save the retention piece for Val, but as you've heard from Dr. Kreeb, we're kind of doing really well there and we just want to continue to keep a focus on that. So we've had seven meetings with our team, myself and Dr. Harris. And again, I want to thank Dr. Kreeb. He's really helped us dive into some data. I mean, Val and I would send him multiple requests a day, kind of changing some certain demographics that we wanted to look at and he's been super helpful. So our first aspiration is to improve enrollment. And you know, we started by looking at all the data and trying to find some common themes. One common theme is that we were losing enrollment in almost all demographics, whether it was age, race, gender, full-time, part-time, et cetera. But the one common theme that is hard to ignore was the number of students that we were losing in the 18 to 24-year-old category. Since 2016, we've had a decline of almost 1,700 students in that 18 to 24-year-old category. And that's a really hard number to overlook. So in addition to this loss, kind of to answer your previous question, Mr. Hyden, Dennis was able to supply us with kind of what the anticipated graduating classes will look like of high schools in our district over, I think it runs through 2032. So we are anticipating a 21% decline in the number of graduating seniors in our high schools within our district with over the next 11 years. So I mean, obviously, as you hear the numbers of declining 18 to 24-year-olds and we know that there are going to be fewer of those graduating seniors. This is where we really hyper-focused because this is kind of, you know, an emergency in terms of looking at how we're going to continue to engage with that age group specifically. So a lot of our next three-year plan strategies will focus on more engagement with those students, more investment in attracting those students. And I mean, obviously, it's kind of, it's going to definitely be the focus. And just a couple of strategies, obviously you guys approved the interact model, the interact contract tonight. That is a huge strategy coming out of key direction one. We also are looking at piloting that shared advisor model with some of our district high schools. We know we have some really big ponds in Alton and Edwardsville, but Jerseyville is another one where we know that our penetration rates in terms of graduating seniors who are choosing Lewis and Clark has a lot of room for improvement as well. There's a total of 10 strategies and you know, they're representative of kind of what the group has decided are really worthy of investing our time, our efforts, our finances into. And that'll be a part of the final document that we put forward, but just kind of wanted to highlight some of those, some of those items. So our key measurables, as, as we've talked about tonight, we know enrollments are across the country, across the state are not improving. You know, our community college partners are seeing this, the same decline that we are. So we wanted to set some goals that seemed attainable, that didn't seem a little too ambitious. So our, we all decided as a group that really our year one goal needs to be to stop the decline of enrollment. And so obviously we heard the numbers previously from Dr. Treska tonight and we are well on our way to, you know, seeing, hopefully seeing an increase at the end of the day, but year one is to stop the decline and then we'd like to continue to see an increase of 1 to 2% beyond that first year, based on that first year's metrics in year two and year three. So I will leave it at that and I'm going to turn it over to Val to talk about the retention strategies. Hello, everybody. So in regards to, with our retention strategy, as Lori said initially, the key direction read to improve both enrollment and retention. And of course, you all heard Dr. Kreeb's presentation about how we're outperforming our peers in the state and the nation when it comes to retention. So to put it simply, the group decided to mainly focus on enrollment. However, when we increase our enrollment, there will also be more students to retain. And so we determined that kind of a stretch goal over the next three years would be to maintain our current exceptional retention rates. To do this, we have suggested continuing to focus on our proven current retention strategies. And just to further the student-centered model that the college has been building. Any questions about that? Thanks.
Thank you. And then next we'll hear from Dr. Lane and Dr. Hill with key direction two.
So Dr. Hill and I co-chaired key direction number two, which is invest in program and curriculum development. We had a great team, Dennis Kreeb, Melissa Bachelor, Kevin Baden, Tammy Boswell, Ashley Harris, Sarah Rankin, Mary Lou Watson. And one of the first things we tackled was what does it mean to invest in program and curriculum development? And we decided that one obvious definition of invest is to invest dollars. But in our discussion, we decided invest means a lot more than just dollars. It means invest our priorities in, in curriculum. Make sure we have the right curriculum in place. Make sure it's curriculum that's taught based on the latest research on how students learn. So we really saw that it went far beyond just some kind of fiscal or dollar investment. So we ended up with five aspirations. The first one was, was to expand administrative support for faculty, program and curriculum development. And one of the outcomes of that is already in process and that is the board approved an instructional designer job, which is posted right now and we should be interviewing for soon. And that will really allow a team of experts, when we develop a new curriculum, it's the dean, I mean Sue, Sue knows a lot about curriculum development in the sense that a lot of new career programs have come through in her area. But so support for Sue, support for the program coordinator, working on the curriculum, support for the faculty teaching the curriculum, and this person would work in close conjunction with our Center for Excellence in Teaching and Learning. So it really kind of closes this loop of making sure that we're on the cutting edge with the right programs. And we've got experts who know how to develop these in the right way. Aspiration two, standardize the academic student experience so that it's transparent across the curriculum. You know, in our discussions, given we had people from different areas of campus, it became clear that our students have to navigate a lot of things. One example that came up was all of our courses have blackboard shells attached and they're used very differently and that's, that's fine. Some faculty use them 100%, some use them minimally. But we have a technology enhanced learning committee who's done a great job on standardizing and doing an evaluation of blackboard templates. But it came up that maybe we needed an LCFA approved blackboard template that includes kind of web enhanced minimum requirements with the understanding that those requirements would be met for all courses, very simple things like you have a syllabus in your course, regardless of if it's a face-to-face course. And again, we're just beginning these discussions. It's an aspiration. We've got many more steps to go through in terms to get input and buy-in. But this was just what the committee said, like, hey, this is worth exploring or investigating. Another example was that if I'm in this class, I find my assignments here. If I'm in this class, I find them in a different place in a blackboard template. So could we work toward making something a little more standardized while maintaining academic freedom for folks to teach their courses in the way they best see fit? Another was standardizing some language. For years, we've used the term syllabus and course outline. And there, for a long time, there's been a lot of talk about the confusion that creates. Students don't really understand what the course outline is. That's kind of a word that was unique to Lewis and Clark. So the group has agreed that we want to propose formalizing. We have a master syllabus which goes to ICCB and then we have a course syllabus, which is the faculty taking the master syllabus and kind of making it their own. Another word is we use specialization for transfer students who want to say may get their AA or AS degree and major in English or psychology. Students don't know what specialization means and we call it that because it's a field in our colleague system. That's what the field is called. We want to start using the language major. You can come to Lewis and Clark and major in English. You can come to Lewis and Clark and major in psychology. And I think that that's going to help with our marketing efforts to attract more students. Across the board, there was agreement that we need a student orientation course, not just kind of an afternoon of orientation that might occur months before the student attends, but an orientation course that they are enrolled in at the beginning of their first semester, when those things seem really relevant. And we talked about it being free and zero credit. We have 60 credit hour limits from the ICCB, so we can't add any more credit hours. And the way we could make it free is if some of our in-house support folks would, would teach these courses. It's common practice in higher education for a variety of different people to teach orientation courses. The third aspiration was to develop a transparent process to explore the need for feasibility of new career and technical education programs. So those programs we talked about earlier, lobotomy, you know, surgical tech. We need to develop a rubric where we are evaluating these potential new programs in a very similar way. How much would they cost? What's the labor market need, et cetera? You know, do we have business and industry partners? And so that was aspiration number three. And now Dr. Hill is going to talk about aspiration four and five and wrap things up.
So continuing with career and technical education programs, aspiration four is about developing a system to ensure the continued success of those programs. The CTE programs have five-year program reviews. Some of them also have accreditation reviews. But the idea is to develop an annual program wellness rubric and also have a program wellness committee. That way, we can respond more rapidly to possible changes or need to change courses or the curriculum. And also five years is a lot of time. A program could fail in five years. So the idea is if there's some sort of annual checkup, things could be done to implement and look at opportunities for growth or opportunity to save a possible program. And then aspiration five, the final one is to encourage innovation and an expansion of transfer program offerings. Dr. Lane talked about this to some degree, but the other parts to this as well. So the idea is to develop and increase articulation agreements. One thing to understand about retention is that if students can see a next step or see a destination, they may be more likely to stay in courses. So the idea, if we have clear pathways for students to go to another institution, their courses are clearly accepted, they can clearly go into another major, that's a benefit for them and it's also a benefit for us. Another thing to go along with that is establish a coordinator for all LC articulation agreements. We're looking at language for existing job positions to add that to make sure that we have a clear coordinator who's reviewing those and make sure they're up to date. We'd also like to implement and market program majors. Dr. Lane mentioned program majors. Even though our students are transferring, they talk with the major they're intending to study. So they'll say, I'm studying psychology. We may not have that program, but that's what they see. And again, the idea is to give them that, that credential that they're seeking as, as you know, kind of a finishing point here that they can take somewhere else. We're also looking to investigate the feasibility of advisory committees for transfer departments. There are advisory committees that exist for CTE programs with it, the same thing doesn't really exist for transfer programs in that, you know, some, you know, I used to be a psychology faculty member. But the idea is if we have an advisory committee or even some sort of alumni group, then there can be guidance given to the program about career options. There could possibly be mentor options. There could possibly be mentor options. They're not, there could also be suggestions regarding new courses that we could think about offering. And then the last thing is to explore, develop, and implement market certificates. Again, people want a certificate that shows the work they've done. It's part of the commodification of education. It's part of kind of, in some ways, the gamification of things. People want rewards. They want things to show for the work they did. So the idea is the more of these we have, the more will be appealing to other people and in the community who are looking to increase their knowledge and skills. Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you. So Dr. Swinski and Debbie Whiskin, thank you.
We'll put it in between. How's that? So our, our goal is build a transparent and inclusive campus culture. Our team members were Matt Bachelor, who's here, Elizabeth Grant, Jared Hennings, Peter Hussey, Val Harris, Laura Inlow, Mike Lemmons, and Yvette McLemore. So we have a pretty eclectic group across staff, across faculty and administration. So our first aspiration was improve internal communication. So a lot of times we hear, how was that decision made? Who said that, you know, there's, you know, we have the rumor mill and then, but we don't have a clear communication skills on our campus. And so we broke this down into one A and one B because we want to increase communication across employees, faculty, staff, administration, but also our students as well. And so some of our ideas were more of those town hall meetings, meeting with some of the board members, meeting with administration, departments holding some of these, these town halls, so we get to know each other. You know, a lot of times you'll hear someone's name, but never put a face with it just because we just don't cross paths a lot, especially for faculty and with administration. So we want to give people opportunities, more casual meetings like coffee with a cabinet member. And we can hold them on campus. We can hold them out in the community, again, to interact with students, to interact with community members and just get more of a dialogue going across, across our faculty, across our staff and our students and the surrounding community. So that's the first one. The second aspiration is to encourage inclusivity and transparency. So, you know, if you want somebody to keep doing something, you reward them, right? We all have had pets and the way you get it to do, give them a treat. So we want to, we want to treat our stars. So if we catch a student doing something outstanding, we want to reward them. We want to put their name up on the, on the billboards. We want to bring their name to board members. We want to celebrate those. So, so we want to find ways to celebrate our faculty, our staff, our, our community members that are caught being good. I mean, that's the Edwardsville moniker is caught being good. So we want to celebrate that. Let me keep going. Do you want to take off? Okay. I want to share. Okay. The third one is include, increase our awareness and appreciation of diversity. So we had lots of discussion about divert the word diversity. And is that appreciating that we are diverse and appreciating all the different cultural and heritage and, and interesting things we all bring to the table? Or is it making sure that we have a diverse population and looking at our hiring skills and our policies? And do we have policies that inhibit some groups from being able to interact? So it's, it's being more aware in all aspects. And so we talked and we, you'll hear lots of overlap about an orientation for students and somehow working into orientation, some cultural awareness, some diversity speak. We also talked about, we have ways of measuring GAC, so general education measures and, and how to increase the use of diversity training there. We've talked about book clubs, having a common place to talk about some of the things that are going on in society. So a safe place to talk about things that are happening as well. And then our fourth.
Okay, we'll save the best of. The fourth aspiration is creating a sense of belonging for Lewis and Clark. And this is really a little bit more of a social aspect. So again, how can we build community through different events? And we talked about, again, students, staff, administration, board members, just everyone coming together, things like Friday happy hour, all-team barbecues, bands. We've had food trucks here the last couple of weeks that have been really nice to see everyone on campus. So those kinds of ideas to bring us all together and get to know each other better. Additional ideas again are Lewis and, this marketing Lewis and Clark through everyone having Lewis and Clark apparel, maybe a t-shirt or something like that that we can wear out in the community. And again, show our solidarity that we love this place and representing what Lewis and Clark is. Encouraging volunteer opportunities for staff and faculty and administration, just all of us to go out and make an impact in this community, kind of give back, just like they're giving to us. And then another idea that was discussed under this one is a mentorship program. We have new faculty roundtable for new faculty members. And that's been really beneficial to help us kind of learn the ropes as a new faculty member, but thinking about things like that for staff members and how, again, they can build a community and get to know each other and kind of learn the ropes. We've also discussed like student advisory boards and, you know, just opportunities for students to come together and talk about all things Lewis and Clark and how, again, can we make this a better place for all? Any questions for us? Thank you.
And then our last key direction would be Brett and Mary. So thank you. Noting the time, Mary and I have elected in our practicality to be very brief. So Katie four is focusing on collaborations, both educational and community for sports of the college. And I would say we have three aspirations primarily in this goal. The first one is to focus on activities that help us expand knowledge and taking advantage of the Whitlock Scholarship Opportunity in the Jersey County area. We all feel that most people don't know or aren't aware of that opportunity. And we're looking for ways to partner with the bank that sponsors that activity to, to expand the, the use of that scholarship. The second area we want to focus on is coordinating with our foundation to increase participation in our alumni association. And we're thinking about creative ways to do that with our current alumni. For instance, you're all probably aware of the Brew House across the street. Two alumni of the college who have a business that wanted to do a scholarship for Lewis and Clark. We need to recognize it's an opportunity, capitalize it and expand that. We certainly have Lewis and Clark alumni all over our district, not just across the street from us. And finally, we need to emphasize personal finance education, both for our students and the community. And the way we, we've, or if you look in any of the publications now, this is becoming huge. People perceive college as a large cost. And they, they are intimidated because they don't understand the language or the financing opportunities that are available to them. So we would, we want to coordinate activities both from our own faculty, from our own financial aid staff and from the community and also banks and districts who also have a mission to increase financial, financial, personal finance awareness and coordinate those activities to better support our own students and the community that we're in. And one of the, one of the agencies or one of the things we've talked about, Mary, I don't know if you have an opinion on this too, but one of the ways we see this happening is through the creation of a Lewis and Clark Community Corps or a volunteer corps. We don't have a name for it yet. But, but they let us take a lead in coordinating the activities of our, our students, our faculty and our staff as we, as we tried to support all of these activities and even some of the activities and some of these other key directions that you've heard about tonight. There's a lot of good ideas on the table and we want to capitalize on as many as we can. Mary, what have I missed?
Not a lot. I would just say there was actually a number of ideas. We had a hard time narrowing it down to just these three. So there's a lot of excitement, I think, there's out in the campus community for ways that we can engage outside of our campus and within our campus and, and do good work. So.
Absolutely. Thank you both and thank you everyone for indulging us. Thank you.
We may not have to adjourn for a closed session unless a board member has a question about the approval of the separation agreement. If you don't have any questions, we don't have, we don't have to adjourn to a closed session. We can vote however you wish to vote on that agreement. Anyone, Larry, do you want, you have any questions? Dwight? Brenda? Student, nobody, no questions? Okay. Okay, then we'd need a motion to approve the separation agreement and release of claims with a former college employee.
Motion.
Dwight made the motion. Do we have a second? Brenda, second? There will not be discussion. We call for the vote.
Copeland?
Yes.
Wertz?
Yes.
McCain?
Yes.
Hyen?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Rust?
Yes.
Hanfelder?
Yes.
Trent?
Yes.
If there is no further business, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you, everyone.